Claire's absent. Alderman Pandeleon?
Here.
Alderman Newman is absent. Alderman Tac?
Here.
Alderman Reisenberg?
Here.
Alderman Edelman?
Here.
Alderman Moreno?
Here.
Mr. Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you, Biddy, very much. Would you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. First item on the agenda this evening, reports of city officers. First comments by Mayor. I have one thing before we have an agenda item. I wanted to let everyone know I intended the ribbon cutting today in the opening of a new corporate office location here in Lake Forest. Horizon Pharma has relocated from Deerfield, adding about 150 employees, fast-growing pharma company. And we are thrilled to have them, and I want to just publicly say congratulations to them and their senior executives. It was a terrific day for both of them or community, for a company that's really started back around 2007, 2008. The CEO today mentioned that in '08, literally, it was kind of a Steve Jobs story where he and a couple guys started this company in their garage. And in '08, they had no revenue. Today, they're a company of 900 employees worldwide, have 300 here in Lake Forest. And last year, they broke the $1 billion revenue number. So needless to say, it was an exciting day for them, and representing our community, it was a very exciting day for me to be a part of, and I want to congratulate them publicly and again tell them welcome to Lake Forest. It's great to have them here. Second item on the agenda is the Emergency Telephone System Board Meeting. I need to open the board meeting, and if I'd ask for a roll call vote, please. Or, I'm sorry, a roll call, please.
Certainly. Honorable Mayor, Sean Hyder?
Here.
Alderman Waldeck?
Here.
Alderman Pandeleon?
Here.
Alderman Tac?
Here.
Alderman Reisenberg?
Here.
Alderman Edelman?
Here.
Alderman Moreno?
Here.
Fire Chief Jeff Howell?
Here.
Deputy Police Chief Carl Waldorf?
Here.
Police Chief James Held is absent. Alderman Beidler's absent, and Alderman Newman is absent. Fire Chief Howell, you have a quorum.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the board. I'd like to take a few minutes just to walk through the city's outdoor warning sirens, if I may. I have a diagram to show you. These sirens are, as best we could strategically located throughout the city. There's a total of 13 of them. They were installed in two phases, in 1997, and then in 1998, they were completed. Most of the sirens are either installed on city property or easement areas to gain access for repairs. The repairs and the maintenance are done on an annual basis by J&amp;S Communications. They do an annual service test and look for any type of repairs or damage that may be issued to the sirens. And they do the maintenance, then, of the repairs that are noted. In addition to that, the fire department will go out on a quarterly basis and check the sirens to make sure that there could be potential for damage after storms and things of that nature. You know, our annual expenditures usually are pretty low for the sirens. When the company comes in and does the maintenance, excuse me, they might find a couple things, occasional battery or things here and there. Unfortunately, this year, we experienced some damage to different sirens, to the magnitude of some solar panels, some different cables. One of the sirens, in fact, the one located in this building, the circuitry board failed. And in addition to that, we had to replace the encoder, which is located in the dispatch center. So with that being said, we certainly exceeded our expenditures, and on the city council omnibus agenda, I would ask for you to approve the appropriations over the original allotted amount. At this time, I'd be happy to take any questions.
Any questions for Chief Howell? Anyone from the public care to have a question or a comment? If not, I'd ask for a motion to close the public hearing of the ETSB.
I move to close the public hearing.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none. The motion carries. And I would like to ask for approval of the ETSB board of the supplemental funding to the ETSB FY 2016 budget to cover the unanticipated costs incurred. If needed, these costs will be included in the year-end supplemental appropriation ordinance. Do I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Honorable Mayor, Sean Hyder?
Aye.
Alderman Waldeck?
Aye.
Alderman Pandeleon?
Aye.
Alderman Tac?
Aye.
Alderman Reisenberg?
Aye.
Alderman Edelman?
Aye.
Alderman Moreno?
Aye.
Fire Chief Jeff Howell?
Aye.
Deputy Police Chief Carl Waldorf?
Aye.
Nine yea, zero... nine yea, zero nay, motion carries.
Thank you, Biddy, very much. And that concludes my comments this evening. Next item on the agenda, comments by City Manager Bob Kylie.
We can close that meeting with a vote. That would be appropriate.
I think we did.
We did.
We did.
Closed it before we voted.
I think you just voted on the recommendation you'd been closing.
Come on, keep up with this city attorney. Let's go.
Vic, you hear?
Okay, never mind.
All right. Always good to keep me in line, but I think we're okay.
Thank you, Mr.-
Happy New Year, Bill.
Biddy, we'll have to keep him in line here. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I did want to point out one item that's on the agenda on the omnibus, which is number eight, the approval of the three-year engineering services agreement with Keywalt Hamilton. Under the budget fiscal impact, it talks about an increase, which is not actually the increase that was reflected in the letter, which was in your packet. The, and this was approved by the, or reviewed and approved by the Public Works Committee at their meeting last week. It should have said that they're actually holding their price for the next two years, and then in the third year, it's a 2.5% increase. So I apologize for the error in the write-up. The letter is correct, and the action taken by the Public Works Committee last week was correct as well. Before we get to the special event policy, I also wanted to ask the deputy city clerk to talk about something that I know is near and dear to your heart, and it's the kickoff tonight with the Iowa caucuses, but elections are here again. And so we wanted to just sort of highlight the schedule about early voting, and I think you all know that City Hall here is an early voting location for residents. So, Biddy?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Early voting actually starts here at City Hall, February 29th. It runs through Saturday, March 12th. Monday through Friday, the hours are 9 to 5. On Saturdays, the hours are 9 to 2. The other item that I wanted to talk about is voting by mail, which really makes things a lot easier for everybody involved. This, what you see on the screen is the Voter Power page. It's, we just took a clip of that from the Lake County Clerk's office, and what registered voters can do is they can go on and they can sign up to get a ballot by mail. It's an application for a ballot by mail. And you can do that two ways. You can do that electronically. This way, once you put your information in, you're prompted to a second screen that will actually give you more personalized to where your voting place is on election day, where you're polling places, et cetera. So keep in mind that if you do this electronically, that you are required to put an email address, and by state law, that makes your email address available to political parties and campaigns. So if you would like to keep your email from being distributed, log onto lakecountyvoter.com, print out the sheet and mail that in, and request a ballot by mail, go in that direction. And then that way, nobody has your email address. So there's a few programs that the Lake County Clerk has right now that those are automatically generated. That's the Snowbird program, and that's for residents who are out of town when there's, during election. The student program, and that's for students who are at school, and then this one, which is the permanent voting by mail program. And this program is intended to simplify voting for voters who wish to continue to receive an application for ballot to the address indicated for the election specified. So really what that is, is if you plan to vote by mail for most of the elections, you can just check those boxes in this second screen once you get there. Voting by mail saves you time in exercising your right to vote. You don't have to stand in line. And the other nice thing about it is, this is an enrollment program, and it stays active so long as you are an active voter, or unless you cancel that with the county. So they have handouts at the back of the room with this page that you see here and other election early voting sites and county information, where you can call here and we can connect you with the county. Thank you.
And as someone who does vote by mail, I don't understand why not everybody does it. It is so easy. And it isn't that we don't want people to come to City Hall and vote. They can still do that, but I think we're going to try and promote it a little more so people understand how simple it is, particularly for Lake Forest residents who are traveling an awful lot during the election time, too. It's just very simple, very easy to do, and I think it would be well-served for people to learn more about how to do that, that process going forward. The final item under my report this evening is a topic that you have had a lot of discussion about over the last six to nine months, and that's the city's special event policy. It is on the agenda tonight for your consideration. And Mike is going to talk about some of the differences in the old policy and new policy. And just so you know, that if approved this evening by the council, then tomorrow, we will be sending out to the different organizations sort of the new information and making sure that if they have any questions, we can get them answers as quickly as possible. Mike?
Great. Good evening. Thank you, Honorable Mayor, members of council. We have prepared a resolution this evening for your consideration, which formally recognizes the amendments that we've recommended to be incorporated in the special event policy. The intent this evening is to seek really your concurrence on this, as Manager Kylie stated, to start our outreach campaign, to start informing the event organizers of the changes that will be forthcoming. So just running through some key terms within, just to reiterate these, we have provided some further guidance on the classification of events, and really the intent here is to kind of help promote some clarity to event organizers so that they understand what sort of considerations we're looking at when classifying those events, whether they're closing right-of-ways, the location and usage of city property, if they're requiring extensive city services. We've also sought to increase the timeliness of when applications are going to be required, from 60 to 90 days. This really helps us in conducting a more thorough review and allowing staff sufficient time internally to look at the elements of the event and what might be required from the city. We have eliminated a provision to require Park and Rec Board via public hearing. Unfortunately, that was just a provision. This is where sort of our practice didn't align with the policy. Seeing as how we do have administrative approval and also require city council approval, we felt that step only inundated the process. We've incorporated some exceptions in here to eliminate some redundancies in requirements and licenses or other permits that we currently have, such as for commercial filming requests, block parties, and so forth. We've also started to look at modifying not only when, but how long certain events can take place to help maintain reasonable use of city services so that we aren't inundating our city services, but also ensuring sort of the safety and welfare for those at large. So we have modified to not allow more than two Class A events, these are, it's important clarification here, two Class A events to occur at the same date and time, and that would be within a couple hours of starting time of each other. We've also capped the number of events that we've looked at hosting, and again, this is something we can modify in the future, but we originally were looking at 10 Class A events, but in looking at the events and then through our discussions last month, we have increased some of those numbers. In the event that our Class Bs start to grow, or are successful, or start to impact the community, we want to have some flexibility there. We've also looked at Market Square and Forest Park and providing for some provisions to help protect those assets. So having certain standards for stakes, tents, other support structures like bleachers, to make sure that those are done sore in a correct manner. It was also recommended that a part of this resolution, we also identify those Class A events. And this was a recommendation that not only council provided, but also one of our event organizers. To save them the step of coming back to council, we thought it might be prudent to identify what our large Class A events are and to sort of adopt them as part of this resolution so that we could allow for some administrative approval to get them through the process in a little bit quicker manner. You will notice some of these events have exempt listed next to them, based on them being city-sponsored events, or those which the city has a stake or budgets for, or provides substantial resources for. They wouldn't necessarily be required to go through the process, but would still be identified as a major event. We are currently working to finalize some of the language in the policy. There's some legal considerations that the city attorney is working on incorporating, some that we think are important. For instance, identifying demonstrations, our use of public forum. We want to incorporate some language that we don't infringe upon certain rights that may be provided pursuant to our city code. So that is sort of a quick run-through of kind of where we've been and where we're looking to go. We, should council be comfortable with those provisions and the direction we're heading? I'd be looking for a motion this evening to approve the resolution as stated.
Thanks, Mike. Any questions for Mike? If not, I would ask for a motion to approve the resolution adopting a revised special event policy for the city of Lake Forest.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. The motion passes. Thank you, Mike, for all your effort. Next item on the agenda, comments by council members. First item, Public Works Committee, award of a bid for the water plant membrane manufacturer, approval of design capacity at 14 million gallons per day, and approval of the water treatment plant design agreement presented by Public Works Committee Chairman Waldeck and with the main contact, Michael Thomas. Director of Public Works, Kathy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You all should have received in your packet a slideshow, a slide presentation. I'm not going to go through that entire presentation, but I will touch on one or two slides, and then we'd be happy to answer any questions. I know this is all material that we're pretty familiar with at this point. First, just let me briefly, quickly state the objectives for tonight's meeting, what we're seeking approval of. Four things, really. The selection of a membrane manufacturer, approval of the design agreement with Strand, evaluating potential construction timeline savings, and a final decision as to plant capacity. I want to move now to the next slide discussing the three vendors. As you probably recall, back in our June city council meeting, we narrowed the pool of vendors down to three who met the criteria that we outlined as a council. Those three are Evoqua, GE, and Paul. You see in front of you the slide describing the criteria that we set, and you can see that they were, all three very strong candidates, that they really, for the most part, met all the, our basic criteria that we put out for. So we had a really strong group. If I were to point out one small difference, you'll notice the very first line, which says, "Strong U.S. market presence." All three did have a strong U.S. market presence, but Evoqua and GE had Lake Michigan experience. Paul Corporation had Cold Water experience, but not in Lake Michigan, so that, one slight factor in favor of the other two. I'm going to jump now to the slide which outlines the summary of the bids we received. Again, I'm not going to read the slide, but I'll just point out a couple things. I think one interesting thing is when you look at the probable cost, which was the estimated cost by the engineer, our consultant, you can see that that cost, that estimate, was actually higher than any of the bids that we received. So they all came in under that estimated cost. And GE was a winner cost-wise. They came in at the lowest. And the next line is an equally important one, the total present worth cost over a 20-year period. And you can see that, once again, GE got the edge in that category as well. So two important categories. We can flip forward now to the recommendation based on bid evaluation. Both our consultant and our staff spent a great deal of time evaluating these bids. And they used a point system, which is laid out for you in this slide, and the total highest possible was 100 points. And I just want to point out one thing. It was included in your materials, but I really do think it was significant. Staff was provided with referrals for all three of these companies, and of course, they called the referrals, but staff really, in this instance, as they so often do, went above and beyond, and they took it upon themselves to research and then call companies which were not listed as referrals. And they interviewed those plant operators, and they really did a very thorough investigation. And at the end of the day, again, all three companies performed well, but GE came out on top. And finally, the presented average probable costs. You see a slight adjustment between, in those final numbers, which accounts for inflation in the FY 2016 and FY 2019 CIP. And there you have it. So we brought this, this was presented to our Public Works Committee this last Wednesday, I think we met, the 27th. It is our recommendation and city staff's recommendation that we approve the 14 MGD membrane system, and that we approve that and award that to GE, General Electric Water and Process Technologies, that we approve Strand's final design task order, and that we evaluate the construction timeline during final design. There's one other item that I hope you got a chance to take a look at. It was included in your packet, and it just listed the various plant locations for the three companies, where they were located, what the plant size was. It's really an interesting, I think, useful tool to take a look at that as well. So with that, we'd be happy to answer any questions. I will try, and if I can't, I bet Mike could, so.
Mike?
I think you guys at Public Works did a great job on this. You were incredibly thorough, and I think you reached the right recommendation, in my opinion. So thank you.
Well, our staff worked tirelessly on this, and we were really, really grateful for all their, all their hard work.
Any other questions, comments? I would echo the same. Very well done. Anyone from the public care to comment on this? If not, I would ask for the council to give me a motion for the recommendation of the Public Works Committee, and for the council to approve the following water plant project items. Number one, final plant design and filtering capacity shall be 14 million gallons per day. Number two, the final plant design shall utilize the GE membrane filters. And number three, based upon the exception noted in Section 8.5 D1 of the city's purchasing directive, approve an agreement with Strand Associates for the water treatment plant design in the amount of $563,000. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Waldeck?
Aye.
Alderman Pandeleon?
Aye.
Alderman Tac?
Aye.
Alderman Reisenberg?
Aye.
Alderman Edelman?
Aye.
Alderman Moreno?
Aye.
Six yea, zero nay. Motion carries.
Great. Thank you. Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda, opportunity for citizens to address the council on non-agenda items. I've got a request from Jeff Urso. Mr. Urso, would you come up and state your address, too, please?
Thank you. My name is Jeff Urso. I'm representing Donatise Pizza. Our address is 950 Western Avenue in Lake Forest, and my home address is 4256 Kenwood Avenue in Gurnee. I'm the owner of Donatise Pizza, here representing the tenants of Westwood Square, which is located at that address. As of January 6, 2016, Donatise closed its doors. We can no longer encourage patrons to come to our building due to the egress on the property. We're known in the area kind of as a kid hangout. We have lots of kids always hanging out, playing in our little courtyard, if anyone's familiar with it. There is a laundry list of what we believe is safety violations that we have sent to the city. Kathy Zerniak and Paul Peterson have been doing a phenomenal job dealing with ADF Capital, the owner of our building. Since we closed on January 6, prior to us, five businesses have left that mall due to same concerns. ADF Capital is aware of all the safety allegations against them. We have emailed them and done everything we can in our power to bring some of these things to light for them. They are using a bully tactic of threatening to evict anyone that kind of brings anything to anyone's attention. We were fortunate enough to move to Lake Bluff, and since we have completed our move, we no longer fear of being evicted. So we are, it's unfortunate I had to wait this long to bring it to the city's attention, and I know if I brought it earlier, that Paul Peterson, the Building Department, everybody would have done something a lot sooner, and that is totally us not bringing that to the city's attention anytime sooner. Mr. Fox, who owns the building, he has personally, you know, anybody that even brings up a safety issue, we have falling concrete in our basement, we have black algae in our courtyard, people fall on a daily basis. We have no handicap parking. The roof is all messed up. The Building Department has been out a lot, has issued multiple citations, and they are doing everything they can to follow up. My point here tonight was just to go on public record, kind of as an exit. Donatise is, you know, unfortunately, leaving the town. I wanted to thank the city of Lake Forest. The city of Lake Forest has been phenomenal to us. I grew up in this town. It's, it really helped us become who we are. We went from a company with three employees to 50 within four years. And that's in large to do with the city of Lake Forest. Everyone in the city, from the fire department to the police department, economic development department, community development partner, everybody has just been awesome in helping us, and they even have helped us transition out of this building into Lake Bluff, as sad as they were to see us go. So again, I just want to thank everybody in the city, just go on public record and state kind of reasons why not only us, but multiple tenants have been and will continue to leave this building. If the city can do anything else about it, I know they're doing everything they can on the Building Department side, and they've been doing great. You know, we would like to see that, but other than that, thank you guys very much.
Thank you, Mr. Urso. We're certainly disappointed that you did leave. Council is aware of the safety issues and the issues that are at the building, and I know, as you mentioned, Ms. Zerniak and Mr. Peterson are hard at trying to solve those issues. But that's an important building, an important location in our downtown area, and we want that building to be full, not vacant. We're disappointed you left. We're glad you're close by, because I would have missed your pizza.
Yeah.
But we hope we can get you back soon. So thank you for coming.
Thank you, guys, very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
If I can add to that, too, thank you for bringing that to our attention, or to the city's attention. And one of the reasons why they grew from three employees to 50 is their product is phenomenal. So I wish you a lot of good luck. I wish you were in Lake Forest, too, but your success is due to a great product. So thank you.
Well, thank you, sir. Yeah, and our success really has been driven from the Community and Economic Development Department of the city. They have really helped us. We grew a lot in schools mostly, which really spiraled our business so much, and the whole city has really done so much for us. And if we, we've been in other towns, and no other town is like this town. So thank you, guys, so much.
Thanks very much. Anyone else from the public care to comment this evening? Would you come up and state your name and address, please?
Paul Hammond, 511 Beverly. Tonight, I have some comments about the trees that the city cuts down. Look at the diameter of the trees in Market Square. For a city 150 years old, they sure have small diameters. A few years back, the city did some utility work in Market Square. The city cut down the large diameter trees in Market Square because they might hit a root and damage a tree. So instead of replacing a tree that might be damaged after construction, the city thought that it would be more important to cut down all the large diameter trees that were probably 150 years old. Point two, a few years back, the city cut down approximately 20 flowering trees at the train station in town on the west platform. I complained to Peter Gordon, and his response was that the new trees were in the budget, so the eight-inch diameter flowering trees were replaced with two-inch diameter trees. Point three, so last year, the city cut down approximately 20 flowering trees at the train sta- train station on the east platform. I once again complained to Peter Gordon, so once again, the eight-inch diameter flowering trees were replaced with two-inch diameter trees. Point four, so last Thursday, I went to South Park. The city had just completed cutting down thirty large evergreen trees that were a nice wind block for the two tennis courts. My sister planted a similar type of evergreen tree on her property, and they were a thousand dollars per tree installed. So the city last week cut down about thirty thousand dollars' worth of evergreen trees. With so many dead emerald ash trees needed to be cut down, why was cutting down healthy evergreen trees at South Park in the budget? I'm truly amazed at the quantity of large diameter mature trees intentionally cut down in Lake Forest and allowed by the city council. Point five, last Saturday, I walked down Franklin Place and noticed one hundred and four evergreen trees on the Franklin Place berm. I guess the city's going to cut down those trees. I would at least save the berm with all those mature evergreen trees. I guess the city council believes that saving one heritage tree qualifies as tree preservation. Tree preservation is supposed to be one of the foundations of the city. If you allow for those one hundred and four evergreen trees on Franklin Place berm to be cut down, then I'm truly disappointed in the city council. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, sir. Are you aware of any of that, or do you know anything that we could get an update from Peter about?
We can certainly get Mr. Hammond an update on all of those, because there is history with respect to the Market Square. Actually, those were dying. It had nothing to do with the utility. And I think some members of the council might remember that about seventy-five percent of them had died, and there was a couple left. If Prue was here, she could have probably addressed it much better than I. Certainly with respect to any tree that is removed in the city, they look at the health of the tree, they look at the age of the tree, and some of those flowering crabs that Mr. Hammond talked about, they have a life cycle, and we've had this conversation about some other areas of town where they reach a certain point and they start to die off, and they're they're not in very good shape. I don't pretend to be a tree expert, but we'll certainly have Mr. Myers and somebody get in touch with him and go through that, because I also don't know the answer to the South Park evergreen issue.
Great, thanks, Bob. Anyone else? If not, moving on. Item five, items for omnibus vote consideration. We have eight this evening, and as we always do, if any member of the council would like to take them individually, we'll do so after I read them. Otherwise, we'll read them, and I'll ask for a motion to approve them all together. Item number one, approval of the January 19, 2015 city council meeting minutes. Number two, approval of the check register for the period January 2 to January 22, 2016. Number three, ratification of the ETF Board's previous approval of the supplemental funding to the ETF FY 2016 budget to cover the unanticipated costs incurred, and if needed, these costs will be included in the year-end supplemental appropriation ordinance. Number four, approval of an ordinance abiding the 2015 tax levy for the 2008 general obligation bond issue, final approval. Number five, final reading of an ordinance approving the adoption of the October 13, 2015 amendment to the Lake County Watershed Development Ordinance to meet FEMA's National Flood Insurance Program requirements and remain a Lake County certified stormwater community. Number six, ratification on previous approval of a resolution committing to expenditure funds, approval of the local agency consultant agreement for design engineering services for federal participation, and the local agency agreement for federal participation for the Lake Forest Metro Station, Union Pacific CBD North Line Stage Three Interior renovation project, and authorization for the mayor and the city manager to execute local agency agreements and other related documents. Number seven, request for city council approval of an agreement for professional design services for the West Fork and Hackberry Storm Sewer Project in advance of FY 2017 capital funds. And number eight, approval of a three-year engineering services agreement for the city surveyor and engineer. Any member of the council wish to take any of those items individually? If not, I would ask for a motion to approve the omnibus.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please, Biddy.
Alderman Waldeck?
Aye.
Alderman Pandeleon?
Aye.
Alderman Tac?
Aye.
Alderman Reisenberg?
Aye.
Alderman Edelman?
Aye.
Alderman Moreno?
Aye.
Six yeas, zero nay. Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda, number six, consideration of an ordinance approving a fee schedule of first reading, presented by Elizabeth Holb, Finance Director.
Good evening, Mayor and city council members. In December, the city council adopted a comprehensive fee schedule for FY 17. One item that was deferred from that action related to water rates for FY 17, and pursuant to direction by the Finance Committee on January 19, we're now presenting to you a fee schedule amendment that reflects water rate adjustments in FY 17 of two and a half percent on the variable rate for all categories of customers. That is operating budget-based solely, so that is just to offset the increases in costs anticipated in FY 17 for operation of the water utility. There are two other minor changes. There is some code revisions based on inconsistency between the code and the fee schedule for some fire alarm fees. It's not a change in fees, it's just incorporation of that in the fee schedule. And the last item is a new fee that was first presented to you January 19 through a code amendment presented by the city manager's office, and now that new fee is reflected in the fee schedule. So both the code amendment and the fee schedule will be back to you February 16 for final approval. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Any questions for Elizabeth? An opportunity for the public, anyone else here to comment? If not, I would ask for a motion to grant first reading the proposed ordinance. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please, Biddy.
Alderman Waldeck?
Aye.
Alderman Pandeleon?
Aye.
Alderman Tac?
Aye.
Alderman Reisenberg?
Aye.
Alderman Edelman?
Aye.
Alderman Moreno?
Aye.
Six yeas, zero nay. Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Item number seven this evening, ordinances affecting code amendments, consideration of an ordinance amending the traffic code, Title VII of the city code, as recommended by city staff. This is first reading, presented by Craig Glupkowski, Police Commander.
Good evening. As you're aware, about a year ago, a, excuse me, new city code was adopted, and since that time, city staff has been reviewing the new adopted city code for updating and corrections and amendments. Presented to you this evening is Title VII, the traffic code, which would improve the overall organization of the traffic code, remove provisions where state law enforcement would customarily be used rather than city ordinance, removes provisions, it also, sorry, updates traffic code language to mirror state law, and will update ordinances to current standards that we now enforce. Staff is recommending that this working draft be accepted. There are some minor tweaks that are being worked on that will be included in for next city council's approval and adoption.
Questions for Commander Glupkowski?
I guess I would have only one. Is there anything significant in here? I mean, I tried to get through it. It was difficult. And actually, nothing? There's nothing significant? Okay, no questions?
Yeah, a lot of updating, a lot of our code, our city ordinances haven't really been updated in quite a few years, and as you know, with technology and state law, state law has kept up with a lot of it, and so we just mirrored a lot of the state law language.
Okay.
Anyone else? Anyone from the public here to comment? If not, I'd ask for a motion to grant first reading of the ordinance amending Title VII of the city code, the city's traffic code. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Waldeck?
Aye.
Alderman Pandeleon?
Aye.
Alderman Tac?
Aye.
Alderman Reisenberg?
Aye.
Alderman Edelman?
Aye.
Alderman Moreno?
Aye.
Six yeas, zero nay. Motion carries.
Thank you very much, Biddy. Item eight on the agenda, new business. Any other new business to come before the council this evening? If not, we'll move on to item number nine, additional items for council discussion. I'll ask for a motion pursuant to five ILCS 122C6. The city council will be discussing a consideration for the sale and lease of property owned by the public body, so I'd like a motion to go into executive session.
I move that we go into executive session.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Waldeck?
Aye.
Alderman Pandeleon?
Aye.
Alderman Tac?
Aye.
Alderman Reisenberg?
Aye.
Alderman Edelman?
Aye.
Alderman Moreno?
Aye.
Six yeas, zero nay. Motion carries.
And thanks very much, Biddy. And just if you happen to be watching at home, once council is through with executive session, we will not convene back into public session again. We'll conclude executive session and then conclude the evening's council meeting at that time. Thank you.